Is this a silicon, already? Oh, excuse me. No, you're good, thank you.
All right, we're returning back from closed session, City Attorney?
Sure, so on the third item on the closed session agenda, there was council action. The motion was to deny a government claim, and the motion was made by Mayor Pro Tem Galván, and seconded by Councilmember Bonita, the vote was four to zero. Mr. Kelly hadn't arrived yet, so he didn't participate in the vote, so the motion passed four to zero.
Thank you. I know some individuals showed up at 5:30, we did make some changes. We were doing closed session at 5:30, but we'll continue to be an open session at 6:00. So moving forward, you might see 5:30 on the agenda, but open session will still begin at our regular time of 6 o'clock. Just wanted to clarify that. And so moving on, public appearances and comments. This is a time for the public to address the council on any item not appearing on the agenda that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. The mayor will... Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, before we get up, getting a little ahead of myself. If I can have everyone stand up, we'll do a pledge of invocation and a pledge of allegiance, I'm so sorry.
Come on, man.
Sky Yes, please. Heavenly Father, we thank you for your blessings upon the city that provide us with all that is needed to live in a healthy and strong community. We thank you for your generosity of all the residents who give of their time, talent, and treasure for the city they love. We recognize that all we have belongs to you, and this council has been entrusted to be wise stewards of those gifts. As you join us tonight, we ask for wisdom in our deliberations and decisions. We ask for the continued safety and health of the community. Lord, we ask that you would bless those who work for the city of Raleigh as well as their families. We also ask for the safety of our police and firefighters as they place their lives at risk every day. We humbly submit these prayers to you in the name of our Lord Jesus Christ, amen.
Please join me in slay to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands our nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, now we be moving forward to item three, public appearance comments. I'll continue, uh, the mayor recognizes you, come to the microphone. Please state your name for the record. You are not allowed to make personal attacks on individuals or make comments which are slanderous or which may invade an individual's personal privacy. Please direct your questions and comments to the city on the, to the city council on any item not appearing on the agenda.
I reserve the right to return again, but do you want us to comment on the mental health presentation before or after the proceeding?
If you'd like to comment, after. What do I, and so just for that item, irrespective of time, if it does go a bit long, we may cut it short, and there'll be additional opportunities for outreach and engagement, but yeah, we'll leave comments for after.
That's right, thank you.
So I need comments on any item not appearing on the agenda.
Eric Reyes, item 35, Apple Week. There could be some people, residents here, that are gonna talk to you about the appeal at the Air Pollution Control District regarding the generators there. So I was on the, I'm actually on the citizen, volunteer citizen appeal board, hearing board. Actually, we voted four to one, I voted against, obviously. But some of the things that unfortunately, and Mayor Revolar is usually well informed. On this one, he was a little misinformed and gave out misinformation, so that's not, he only gave out part of the whole scenario. So the 50 hours that he talked about the generator being able to be used in total was only for proper maintenance, that they have to do required to allow to make sure everything happens. There are no limitations to the amount of hours a generator can be used for its purpose of emergency backup time, right? So it's, I hope when you make these statements that we have all of the information and give it out correctly. So obviously, in a tight residential situation is that there's a house 10 feet from it, apartments 50 feet from it, a park, school, the Christian Academy School, they also put in their letters of, against it as well. It's better, I think, that the city, there's already two existing generators on that site as well. This was a third one coming in. 150 hours of maintenance, untold hours during emergency issues, earthquakes. We've had transformers go out nine to 16 hours at a time. When the lines went out in West Shores, they were out for about five days. Over 100 hours of generators moving on. So those issues are really important, that we have the proper information for the public when we make public statements. All right, so I think we need to look into also in orderness, I'm looking at other cities. I think, because we don't think we can have such close proximity to what we know are harmful particulate matter causes cancer and other respiratory issues near residential, near children, near working people, near public parks as well. So that's my statement on that, and I hope, I know this is not your jurisdiction at the time. The Air Pollution Control District rightfully denied that permit, and who are the professionals as to knowing what should be done and shouldn't be done, right? And the Volunteer Citizens Board, in my mind, and I told them, oh, they're upset with me, that's okay. Who isn't, right? We overturned a sound decision by the Air Pollution Control District. I wish city representatives had been there to kind of see how the process went, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Good evening, I'm Janet Stills. I'm on the president of the Imperial Valley Pickleball Association, we're a 501(c)(3). We met with city council before, sharing our mission, which is going to be to revitalize Reserve Park Courts to make six pickleball courts and leave two tennis courts available. We just kind of wanted to do a little recap, but first, I would like to introduce our members. So I have Sue Casey, she's our treasurer. In the audience, would you stand up if you're an Imperial Valley Pickleball Association member? These are some of our members, so we just wanted to bring them along with us. So as you know, we had a tournament, and Sue will share the information of how well we did, kind of where we're at. We did write a grant to T-Mobile for $50,000. We should hear something, hopefully, end of February. And then we have our eyes set on some more grants as well. But as Sue will share, we are far from our goal. So we are hoping that with the Measure J, if there are any non-allocated funds available, that you will keep us in your minds for our project, thank you.
Good evening, Council. We were very excited about how well we did in our, at our tournament. In our, in December, we had our tournament here at the Lions Center, and we're very grateful that those fees were waived. We made over $2,300, and as Janet said, we are far from our goal. We did do a campaign of asking for straight donations for our building fund. We have over $2,000 there as well. And then we've had some other donations come in along with our membership dues. So we're currently at a little over $5,000, and our budget or our need is into the hundreds of thousands. And so as tonight, as you look at your budget and as you're doing your projecting, we want you to keep us in mind as well, to keep that project there. Those courts have been inoperable for well over a decade, and we would really like to see, you know, Raleigh's been known for their parks, and unfortunately, that one's gone, kind of been let go, but we are here to help in any way we can. As Janet said, we have written one grant, we're looking at another grant that we want to do, and we certainly will like your assistance when we get there. So again, I would like you to take a notice of all of our diverse group of our pickleball players that we have here, from all walks of life, and we are quite the group that have fun every, every morning that we can go there, and then when it's graciously open on the weekends, we have a lot of fun, we invite you to come out and visit us, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for coming out, everybody.
Thank you.
Julie Reeves, and I'm here, I know it's a, it's a state issue, but I'd like you to hear me out. It's in regards to the trash fine, if you don't put your trash in the right receptacles. And I know there was, I heard about someone seeing the guy in Imperial driving around checking people's trash cans, and I feel this is a wrongful law that's been enacted. I think it's discriminatory in the fact that you take people that are older, elderly, or infirm, and trying to figure out which trash goes into which receptacle, and if they don't do it right, they're subject to a fairly high fine. And the other stupid thing about this is, several years ago, I, there was a guy who's having dinner at his house, and we were putting all the trash in the trash can, I said, "Where is your recycle versus trash?" And he says, "Ah, I don't do that." I said, "Well, how do you get away with it?" And he goes, "I just called the city, and I pay more money for my trash, and I put everything in one dumpster." And I got to thinking, you know what, I have an office, I have a ranch, there's apartment buildings all over, they're all in one big dumpster, nothing is separated, so everything goes into one trash. And I even read where they found it was so expensive to clean out the trash and the recycles, they had to hire more people to do it, so it wasn't cost-effective. I think this is an illegitimate fine, and I would like the city to, if nothing else, write a letter to the state about it, encourage other cities to do the same. And you could also do what our Board of Supervisors did in regards to that transgender law about teachers not being able to tell the parents if their child was wanting to do this. And the Board of Supervisors said, "We will not enforce that law." So maybe you guys would be generous and say, "We're not gonna enforce this tax law." I think it's just a rip-off of a way to get money, and it's, hopefully, you guys will consider doing this. This is not right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? I know I'm not supposed to respond, but if I may, Council, I know I'm gonna accuse them spreading misinformation or fake news. Now, thank you for that information, I will say, Mr. Reyes, yeah, we weren't there, or well informed of it. I know you came up tonight, I am a bit disappointed with many opportunities, and you're not one to be shy to speak, and I wish you would have informed us either publicly or even privately about this matter, leading up to the vote. So hopefully, this is a start of better conversations amongst some issues that you're part of that impact our community. I did speak with the Air Pollution Control Officer. The generators met federal, state, card, and local standards, which triggered, from my understanding, the denial was amount of letters received, which I think shows the power of organizing and community input. So, and you're right, 50 hours maintenance, and the generator could theoretically run for thousands of hours in the case of emergency. And I don't mean to make light, but God forbid, an emergency that would knock out our power for thousands of hours, I think the last word would be what kind of generators keeping communications going. And I know, not trying to make light, I think that's very serious when I say that as someone who's worked in emergency operations and communications. I think we look at the fires in LA, every second counts when emergency happens, especially when you're trying to communicate vital information to loved ones and houses to receive it. I've worked during COVID in emergency communications through all the storms. And so, you know, every second does count. Unfortunately, there is a balance between environmental responsibility as well as emergency infrastructure, even though this is communications-wise, and so it's a balance. I think that we can do better, I know corporate responsibility as well touches a bunch of these things, but I will say, and in purpose, we spent misinformation, I spoke with the Air Pollution Control Officer and the staff, and tried to get my information, because I did read about it, so I just wanted to clarify that. And hopefully, I said, better communications between us, between Air Pollution Control or any other government agency and corporations that are doing business within Raleigh. So just wanna state that. Any more public appearance or comments? No, okay. With that being said, we will be going on to item B, oh.
Buenas tardes, disculpe pero voy a hablar en español. Se puede arrimar, por favor, al micrófono, gracias. Comentar que fueron 66 firmas de la comunidad que no estamos de acuerdo en que pongan el generador de emergencia, y no a todas las personas que vivimos a un lado les llegó la carta de aviso de construcción. Y la prueba está que Belén López, de Control de Aire del Centro, nos dijo también que se le habían regresado varias cartas. Y no todos de la comunidad, padres de la escuela Bárbara y la escuela cristiana saben lo que quieren construir. Ya hay dos generadores de espectro algún lado de la antena, y ahora quieren poner el tercer generador. Es demasiada contaminación que afecta la salud de la comunidad cercana. Niños, adultos, mayores, personas con enfermedades respiratorias y embarazadas. Esto leí en una página aprobada por California, propuesta 65. El escape de motores diesel arroja más de 40 sustancias químicas que causan cáncer de pulmón y el vejiga leucemia y otros tipos de cáncer. Contribuye al aumento del asma, bronfios y otros problemas respiratorios. De cualquier forma, los tres generadores que están instalados aumentan más esos riesgos de salud. No solo estará uno, sino tres generadores en el mismo lugar. Espero que no pase, hay una tragedia. Se prenda por la emergencia. Toda esta contaminación nos perjudica a los que estamos alrededor. Va a estar horas prendido, y no solo uno, estarán los tres al mismo tiempo de, en el momento de la emergencia. Y eso también se tiene que tomar en cuenta. Por favor, ayudemos a que, para que no lo pongan por la salud de nosotros, por la salud de nuestros hijos de la Bárbara y los que vivimos ahí, gracias. Disculpe si nos podría dar su nombre, por favor. María, María.
Mr. Mayor, has, has the city issued permits on this already? There's some sort of city action that has been taken?
Yeah, as far as I know, this is under the jurisdiction of the county at this point. I don't think that we issued permits for that, actually, I was speaking to our fire chief earlier. Let's see here today.
It's outside.
And we were discussing this matter, because I did talk, I believe it was to Maria that called. So we've been trying to get more information, but at this point, it's not under our jurisdiction, so we have no way on the permits.
Do we know how they were notified, the public?
Well, again, that's something that was not under our jurisdiction, so we didn't do any notification, because these generators fall under the jurisdiction of the county. Even our own generators get inspected by the county, so we have no jurisdiction over them. It's Imperial County Air Pollution Control, our understanding has full jurisdiction. Unless, Fire Chief, anything you want to add to that?
All right. Any other public comments? All right, moving on to item 3B. We do have a presentation from the Imperial County Behavioral Health Service. Before we get, this is an informational presentation. This council is not the deciding body for this matter. This will be decided ultimately by the Imperial County Board of Supervisors. They directed Behavioral Health to conduct outreach here, and additional opportunities for you to reach out to them. So ultimately, like I said, we're here to get informed, be engaged, we'll ask questions, we'll allow the public as well. And so, I guess, I shared with Mr. Couchman, I respect time, we'll allow the presentation. If we do go a bit late, we may cut it short, but you will have additional opportunities to ask questions and be informed. And they'll be, I think, sharing some of those opportunities after the presentation, correct? So, cool, thank you.
Good evening, and I want to thank you for the invitation. Good, like I said, we appreciate the opportunity to come and talk to you and share some of the information regarding our proposal. We feel that this will have, will bring a lot of benefits to your community, and we want to share some of the things that we have been doing, and we will continue to do to involve the community. Am I supposed to click?
House.
Uh, this one. So some of the things that we'll share today is, first of all, give you an overview of why we're doing this. Give you an overview of the grant, some of the requirements within the grant, some of the considerations and barriers we took into consideration when proposing this project. We will go in detail as to some of the things that we proposed under this grant, whatever programs, services, what are gonna be our next steps, and some of the benefits we see under this project. And like you mentioned, we'll have a time for questions. So one of the things that the state has been focusing over the past few years in, is providing, they realize there is a big problem throughout California when it comes to infrastructure for behavioral health services. When I refer, when I talk about behavioral health, we're talking about both mental health and substance use. So a few years ago, in 2021, legislation passed, to the, to, you know, allowed the State Department of Healthcare Services to offer grants for counties throughout the state to start improving the infrastructure. The grants have been given for different populations, for mobile crisis units, to improve the infrastructure for children's services, young adults for crisis. So in 2021, we applied for a couple of grants. One of them was for building residential facility for SUD. We were granted 17 million, and that's been, as a matter of fact, in the plans to open that, or to start the construction of that programming in El Centro. We also got two grants for improving one of our clinics, a children's clinic, that really needed a lot of work. And again, this infrastructure grants were coming because mental health systems have really struggled in having the funding to build or to enhance current programs. Another one is to enhance our current triage unit where we receive 51/50s individuals on a voluntary hold. In 2024, as you know, the governor really had pushed for changing what we currently had, currently have under the Mental Health Services Act. And it passed, and now it's called the Behavioral Health Services Act. Under that grant, they also put more money into infrastructure. So this new grant that we are, we applied for is allowing 3.38 million for these type of projects. And it's really in support of behavioral health treatment facilities, residential care settings, and really, everything is to ensure there's an expansion of services within the behavioral health system. So in August of 2024, they released the grant, the grant application. They will be distributing 3.3 million, of which 1.5 will go specifically to cities and counties. The other one, 1.5, will allow other individuals to apply, well, allowed other individuals to apply, including cities, counties, and tribal entities. On November 26, we went to the Board of Supervisors, and we were approved to submit the application for this project. On December 13, we submitted the application, and we are expecting that the grounds, that awards will be announced in May of 2025. So some of the requirements for this grant is that all applicants needed to be launch-ready, meaning that almost everything needed to be in place, plants, side control, budgeting, that everything was formalized, because they want to make sure that as soon as they award the funding, these entities are ready to start the process moving. Although, sometimes with the current projects, it takes a couple of years to get going. It's all the processes that require, you know, that we go through this lengthy contracting process. One of the requirements is that we commit to use a facility for what was proposed in this, in the grant application. We must be able to provide a 10% match for the projects, or whatever the amount is. We, the county, is supposed to offer a 10%, and this 10% can be part of the value of the facility where the project will be built. And then also, we need to demonstrate how this facility will allow us to expand services. In our current facility, that, the facility that we're proposing, one of the concerns is that the county did not have the funding to make the repairs. We have had a facility on the second floor for many years. However, because there's no funding in the county to repair the air conditioners, we had to vacate it almost four years ago, and the facility has been empty. So we have not been able to expand, even though the population is growing on the mental health side, we have not been able to expand services, because we had to really move our staff to other locations, which is not optimal, we want to return to this facility and be able to expand. And then the other thing is that the state requires that if we get awarded, that we agree to provide quarterly reports on whatever information they request. So when we applied for this grant, or we're in the process of applying, we submitted a lot of requests to stakeholders asking for their support, and these were the entities that provided the support. They expressed the support and gave us letters in support of this project. So some of the priority consideration in developing this project is now working. Okay. In 2023, we conducted some surveys, because the state had been providing funding to develop programs to address the opioid crisis. So surveys were sent to, across the county, we received feedback. We received feedback indicating how they wanted us to spend some of the funds. And the number one priority was implementing services in the Brawley area to address that SUD substance use disorder problem that we have in the northern area. You know, I will be showing you some data that it's public, that, you know, really highlights the northern area as one of the ones with very high death rates and also emergency department visits. There are other reports indicated about, you know, that give us more information on, you know, how this area or how communities benefit from obtaining and establishing services for the community. One of the reasons we consider is because there is lack of accessibility to behavioral health, to substance use, particularly here in the northern area. There is no clinic. Individuals currently have to travel to El Centro if they're interested in receiving treatment. You know, one of the, we want to listen to the community concerns, but many times, some of the things that we're hearing is that there is a concern that this clinic will bring criminal activity to this community. There's also, I'm sorry, I'm not moving it, it's moving. There are some misconceptions that this is a methadone clinic. In reality, this is not a methadone clinic that we're recommending. So we want to be able to provide information on the type of treatment we're offering. And like I mentioned before, there's limited funding. If we do not take advantage of these grant opportunities to enhance and expand our services, you know, we may never be able to bring additional supports to the community. And here are some slides that indicate. This one is opioid-related deaths by overdose in the northern area. If you see the average for California, it's 19, where we have very high rates for Westmoreland, Brawley, and Calipat. When you see these slides, these are the way they are posted. It doesn't mean that other communities in Imperial County do not have these type of problems, but the percentage was so low that they don't rank in these slides. And at the bottom, you see the source where this information is provided. Fentanyl-related overdose deaths. The red line, it's the line that signifies California overall. And in the top, we have Westmoreland, then we have Calipat, Brawley, and El Centro. Prescription opioid-related overdose. Again, California is at 2.32 and Brawley is at 4.94. Cocaine-related overdose deaths. Again, California is at 3.84 with Brawley at 7.01. And these, the next slides are going to be covering the emergency room visits related to opioid-related overdose. This is, again, we are leading with California being a 61. You see the numbers, some of them are very alarming. Fentanyl-related overdose ED visits, California 26, Brawley at 91.59, Calipat at 88.68. Another thing I wanted to share is this slide. One of the things that has happened, this is for our mental health services. These are the clinics that we have that provide individuals with a mental health diagnosis. Every time we come to a community, like, you know, when we came to Brawley, we usually have been serviced those individuals in El Centro. When we open the clinic, we start seeing the numbers of cases going up because people know, you know, access services. We are in their community. And the initial numbers at 289 were clients that were probably being served somewhere else. But if you see, year by year, the numbers start increasing. In last year, we had 1,410. And as of today, at the end of January, we had served 1,180. So you see the progressive increase of people accessing services. When it comes to the next slide, please, on substance use, we have not seen an increase. For the most part, the numbers have remained. In the 240, there's been a slight increase. But those individuals have to be going to El Centro to get services because that service is not offering their community. And we feel very confident that once the clinic, if awarded and is established here, we're going to see the same pattern of individuals really accessing services because we see them in the emergency rooms. We see the death of individuals with substance use problems. However, the numbers may be increasing or may be so high because they're not accessing services. Transportation has always been a big concern. We offer the transportation to most of the individuals that are coming to El Centro, and we also make sure they come back home. And so this is, this is just to give you a picture of what we're seeing right now when it comes to numbers. We invited Dr. Gonzalez from Pioneers. She works here at the emergency room, and I would like to invite her to come and give you just a perspective from the hospital, the experience that they have in the emergency room. And we also have Ray, who's a citizen here of Brawley, and his experience in, with the treatment or the lack of treatment. So, Dr. Gonzalez, if you'd like to.
I wore my dress scrubs just for this. No, I'm just joking. I'm Alicia Gonzalez, like she said. I'm an emergency medicine physician. I'm also an addiction medicine physician. And I serve as the Director of Clinical Training for the California Bridge Program, which was what our state, at the statewide level, an organization that was founded, it's a nonprofit, under the Public Health Institute, to try to help emergency departments do a better job, starting patients, especially with opioid use disorder, on medications in the ER. And the reason the state put millions and millions of dollars into that effort is exactly what we're talking about right now. Is that the patients who need it the most, the Brawley residents, the Westmoreland residents, the Bombay Beach residents, don't have access. If you were paying attention to the news at the end of the year, you may have seen that finally, for once, the number of deaths from opioids in California decreased for the first time. It was a logarithmic going up, 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 and it came down. But when we broke that down by counties, it's all the cities that went down. The cities where we've done a bunch of work to make sure this care is accessible to patients. The rates of death did not go down in places like Brawley. It went up in places like Brawley. We see this in the ER every single day. I cannot even tell you how many patients I see who have addiction issues, especially with opioids. We see death, and it's not what you might think. It's not always people who are criminal justice involved or criminals unhoused. It's lawyers, doctors, nurses, somebody's neighbor, somebody's kids, somebody's counselor, somebody's teacher. We've all had to cope with a very difficult life in the past X number of years, you know, on this earth in different ways. And especially that COVID pandemic really, really was hard for a lot of humans in so many ways. So we have a lot of people who struggle with addiction. You start that person on this medication, buprenorphine, so you're going to notice I'm not saying methadone. Buprenorphine is a medicine that doesn't work quite like methadone. You can go home with a prescription. You don't have to come to the hospital or the clinic every day to have it. And it doesn't make people feel high the way that methadone makes you feel high. It's a super amazingly functional drug. We see patients who come into the ER in withdrawal or who have overdosed. We start those patients on buprenorphine, they do amazing. Then they come back to the ER and they say, "I'm running out of my medicine and I don't know where to go." We try to send them to El Centro, and lots of them can't get there. It's too far, they have to go on their lunch break from their job, and they can't get to El Centro and back on their lunch break. There's a lot of stigma they face. They can't tell their boss where they're trying to go, why they have these appointments to get their refills. But I'll give you an example, a person that came in, was that very nice to our staff, was extremely, you know, withdrawing from drugs, he was having a bad day. But we did the right thing, started him on this medication. A couple of months later, he came back to the ER and I saw him. He was just there for a refill. He apologized, he told me he got a job, that for the first time in his life, he didn't feel like his only mission was to find his next hit, that he was no longer stealing from family, he was working on being able to have visitation to his kids, and his mother was with him and she was crying, he's an adult human, saying that we helped save his life. We could do that so much better if we didn't have to do it in the ER in Brawley. I would love for us to be able to do this in the clinic. And then our little Brawley ER could be less busy. We could have, you know, more space for the other emergencies that we're seeing, which is our specialty and what we want to do. We're happy to see anything and everything that comes in. But I would love to have our patients who have addiction be able to have access to care at their home community so they can stay on their meds. All the evidence shows it decreases morbidity and mortality. People stop dying when they're on these medications, and they get their life back the way they want it to be. And you don't see communities have increased crime when you have access to treatment. You see decreased crime, you see better employment rates in these populations. So all the evidence in states or in cities all across California, the bridge programs on this in communities, yes, big cities, but also Reading, Stockton, Placerville, places that are a lot more like Brawley where it's not a big urban center, and it is successful. And we see all those data points get better. And just far more importantly, my heart breaks every time I see a patient come back for a refill and say, "I don't know what to do. I can't make it to El Centro. I need to have access to care in Brawley and I just don't have it." And then those patients end up having a harder time. You know, the ER doesn't want to deal with their refills, they relapse. I don't want to see that happen. So our emergency department team is in big support of this grant. We love the idea of having a place to be able to connect our patients. And I hope that you'll continue to be excited about it, just like the ER.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ramundo Gonzalez, I go by Ray. I'm currently a behavioral health therapist for the Adult SUD El Centro Program. I just want to throw it out there, I'm a citizen from Brawley, born and raised. I've had pros and cons from growing up here. A lot of it, I experienced substance use while I was growing up, not only with me, but my father's family, my father has 13 brothers and sisters. Probably about 10 of them were substance use, they were heroin addicts, meth addicts, and I grew up, I grew up watching them. At the time, I didn't know what I understood. But now, 42 years old, I was educated and I understand it. The only help they had here in this community in Brawley was a spiritual base, you know, church that could help them. Luckily, some of them used it in a positive way. And unfortunately, I lost some of my family members to heroin and meth or to complications with illnesses due to substance use. There was one point that I left Imperial County and I was able to get out of this environment and heal. And it was through a spiritual-based church. My uncle was actually called to start a church outside of the county, and I followed with my father. Ended up coming back. My mom's family, my siblings are still here from Brawley. I kee decided to come back to Brawley. Started my education at IBC, got my bachelor's degree in psychology, SDSU, and recently got my master's in social work. I've been a therapist for a year now, and I've seen a lot of people that I grew up that still live here in Brawley. And I was, had the privilege to help them through their recovery. The point I want to make is that if my family had a resource or just educated in the services, I think I would still have a couple of my aunts or my uncles here. We were poor growing up and there was no way out of Brawley, you know, there was, El Centro was far for us. Growing up, it was like, "No, it's too far, it's too far," or any other city here. So they were leaning on spiritual-based churches. And some of them made it and some of them didn't. I'm honored to still live here and be able to be the solution, be part of the solution and not the problem. Because I know, I've seen people recover. I've seen people actually change their lives, get a job, go back to the careers they once had. And it's, it's nice to share and relate to them, how we get, regain our lives back if we get the right services. So just wanted to throw that out there, and I'm just proud to be from Brawley, and I just want to be able to help my people. Thank you.
Thank you, Ray.
So after, you know, those wonderful presentations that give you an idea as to why we do what we do and what is it that we're trying to achieve. The project that we are proposing and the fact that, you know, we want to make these services accessible to the community in the northern areas of Imperial County. You know, as you see, a lot of, you know, the deaths that continue to grow these numbers in the northern area while they're reducing in our central southern area because, you know, we do contribute the fact that, connected to the fact that there's accessible care in those areas, and we've seen a decline since we have implemented our services. And we want to do the same for the northern community. As, you know, Dr. Gonzalez said and Ray just explained, you know, having these services accessible improves the overall health of an entire community. Whether you are affected by substance use or not, this brings benefit to you as well. And what I'm going to present to you is what we are proposing as part of this project. As we said, we don't know if we're going to get the funding, but we are very hopeful that we would. And so we named our project "The Northern Horizons Behavioral Health Expansion." The population that we want to focus on are transition age youth, which would include the 18 to 25 because this would focus on adults. Adult ages 26 and older, perinatal, pregnant and postpartum women and their children. We find that working with women who are either pregnant or postpartum or that they have children, it's so important because we're not just treating the perinatal woman, we're also treating the children and ensuring that services are extended to the whole family. And of course, older adults ages 65 and older, that many times they are isolated, they don't have the help that they need. They don't have the ability sometimes to get to treatment. And having that additional support in services that focus on the older population is very important within a community. So the location that we are proposing is the Tunny Williams County Administration Center that is also known as the Courthouse, located at 220 East Main Street in Brawley. What we are proposing with the funding, the, you know, the infrastructure is to do, of course, interior improvements to the entire facility. This is a facility that does require a lot of work. There are a lot of improvements that are needed within the facility that are not, you know, funding, it really is not that available to the extent, to the extent that it's needed for the improvement. So we're looking at rehabilitating and remodeling approximately 20,000, 21,000 square feet that consists of a new layout, new finishes indoors, and the HVAC system that, as Letizia has mentioned, we had to move people out of that facility because that HVAC system needs to be repaired and the cost of it is, you know, very, very high, over $1.5 million. The exterior improvements, we of course want to make the facade, you know, a beautiful, more modern facade that improves, you know, the, not just, you know, the building, but it also helps out, you know, in the area of where we have this facility and beautify the place. Re-roofing, the parking lot requires a lot of repairs. We're looking at new fencing and replacing all the exterior windows and doors to make everything new, new and energy-efficient products. The landscape, we want to create an environmentally and drought-friendly landscapes that will beautify the outdoors of the property and provide a welcoming entrance. We really focus on doing that in these facilities. The Sheriff's Office and Air Pollution have a small portion of that building that they use, and they will remain on-site during the project. and they will remain on site during the project. We, after, you know, we consulted with an engineering company, professionals that provided a whole assessment of the facility and the parking lot, the surrounding areas. And they provided us with, of course, an estimated cost for this project. We are requesting a total of twenty-two point four million dollars for this project specifically. The construction cost, only construction, is fifteen point one million dollars that it would take to rehabilitate this facility. The rest of the money that totals to the twenty-two point four includes the contingencies, if any, about twenty percent contingencies in case there's anything that comes up that we need to have that money available. Any type of professional architecture service, legal services, any type of change orders that may happen throughout the construction, the construction management services, project management services, building permits and advertisement, general liability insurance, information and technical services and environmental testing reports. All of this is involved as part of getting this project going. Again, as you can see, based on the costs that we were provided, it is a lot of money that it's not just easily there available for other agencies. And we're hoping that through this day, we can get that information. This, what we are proposing is a campus-type model. And what do we mean by that? This will be a building that we will focus on providing high-quality services with the following approach. It will be an integrated mental health and substance use disorder treatment. As we have in the past explained, and some of you might know, when there is a behavioral health condition, there's, if somebody is, has a substance use disorder, there's usually some type of mental health condition that also needs to be addressed. We want to be able to address these conditions in one setting for individuals rather than having people going to different places. We want to make sure that it's this building where they can come in and access the care. We want to enhance the service delivery through a whole-person-centered care. What we mean by that is looking at the whole individual and what are the needs of that person, of the whole person. And we look at the social determinants of health. Everything that involves a person when you're treating them, which includes, you know, looking at their behavioral health, medical, dental, you know, the whole, any type of recovery environment that we need to look at and how we can assist. And that also includes the collaboration across agencies in the health system. As you heard Dr. Gonzalez explain, it is so important to have that collaboration to be able to continue to follow the person and address the whole person. Because if you don't do that, you're leaving gaps within their, the person's treatment that are not being addressed and that can, again, trigger problems or barriers within their recovery. And it's so important to have that local agency collaboration. We want to provide intensive behavioral health service that is in the least restrictive setting to support community integration, choice and autonomy. You heard Ray mention, you know, these experiences and how it's so important to be reintegrated into community. You know, Ray talked about his experience and the experience of his family. And, you know, having that opportunity to use your own lived experiences also to then help others, it's a huge, you know, goal for a lot of even our clients that are currently receiving these services. And we've been able to get some of our clients really start doing that as well within their treatment. We want to be able to provide immediate interventions to address urgent behavioral health conditions. And this is something that will be available to the entire community. We're looking at having therapeutic rooms that are open on a walking basis to anyone that might be experiencing some type of urgent behavioral health condition. All of us, at some point, my experience, some type of behavioral health issue, a stressor within our life that might make it difficult sometimes to manage and it might affect our mental health. Whether it is a stressor that is creating a level of anxiety, a level of depression, you know, some level of trauma, we can all experience that at some point in our lives. And we want to make sure that there is this service available where anyone in the community can access that and we can address it. And if it's necessary to have ongoing care, we will help with that as well. But if it's something that can be addressed at that point timely and prevent the onset of other more serious behavioral health conditions, we want to be able to do that for the community. As I mentioned, utilize the no wrong door approach, which means that, you know, anyone can come in, they will be assessed. We will determine, look at the whole person and see what other services are needed to address the needs of that individual and have that collaboration. We want to provide timely access to behavioral health services to improve the quality of life for those who are served, the families, and I mentioned the overall community. This is, you know, the map of where the building is. As you can see, it's the building and then the parking lot surrounding the building that we're looking at improving and rehabilitating. And then this is the proposed project. This is the draft. As when we're working with these grants, we have very limited time. So, you know, this is something that is put together by the engineering company that we contract for that project. And they give us a draft based on what we provide. So this, what you see is the first floor where we're going to have our substance use disorder clinic, our therapeutic rooms that will have a different entrance separated so that others from the community can access. And then we have an area also that will be reserved for community agencies because we want, you know, that ability for other community agencies to have office space so that they can provide that whole person care and address all of the needs of, made of people that are being served in this, in this building. And you have the second floor, which is focused on our mental health. The orange area is what's being occupied by the Sheriff's Department. As I mentioned, they will stay there. And our air pollution department also has a small section there that they will continue to use. And then the rest is the clinic for our mental health services. And services that will be provided there, as we mentioned, is an integrated approach. Substance use disorder services focus on providing early intervention, outpatient and intensive outpatient services, ambulatory withdrawal management, medication for addiction treatment, care coordination, family therapy, recovery services, clinician consultation, residential treatment. This is our out-of-county contracts that we have. We don't have a residential facility currently in Imperial County, but we do have contracts that are for residential facilities that are located in Riverside County and LA County. We provide the transportation. And when anyone that is receiving services requires a higher level of care, then we coordinate with our out-of-county providers. As Letizia mentioned in a previous grant that we have been awarded, we are currently working on the construction of a sixteen-bed residential facility that will be here locally. It will be in El Centro. And so we have started with all of the planning. We're hoping to have a facility in the project completed by June of 2027 so that we can start looking at providing these services here locally. We have contingency management services, which is currently a pilot program through the state that focuses on individuals with a stimulant use disorder. We have seen great improvement and results through this program. We also provide harm reduction services. This involves a lot of education to the community and with, within also the population that we serve. And crisis intervention stabilization. With mental health, we also, will also provide crisis intervention stabilization, medication support services, mental health services that include therapy and rehabilitation, targeted case management. Again, this is what focuses on really addressing the whole person and ensuring there's linkage to additional services. And then other additional services that will be part of this will include transportation. We find that this is a very important element within our services because of how our unique our county is and we have, you know, towns that are pretty separated. We want to make sure that we have that accessible to our clients. Housing support services, this is a very important component that now is also part of our Behavioral Health Services Act that we must provide this type of support. Peer support services, so having people with lived experiences that can also work with our clients. Walk-in therapeutic rooms that I had mentioned before. Telehealth services, in-home services for some of our clients that are more homebound. This is more of the older population that sometimes may have difficulties getting out of their homes to go to a clinic. And of course, outreach and engagement. This is outreach to the community, engagement to ensure that people understand what services are available to them and there's education on the services that we provide. And this is our workforce that we are looking at. We will have highly trained, professional, licensed, registered providers that are part of our workforce. We have psychiatrists, registered nurses, licensed vocational nurses, behavioral health therapists, mental health rehabilitation technicians or specialists, substance use disorder counselors, peer support specialists, community service workers, mental health workers. And of course, we also have administrative support that include program supervisors, office supervisors, office technicians and office assistants. We will have a contracted twenty-four-seven security services as well. And as I mentioned before, we will also have staffing from other community agencies that will be able to use that office space. And I'll ask the gentleman to let you know.
I want to ask Victoria to come up. So under next steps, Victoria is the deputy director overseeing the substance use disorder clinics for both adolescents and adults for the clinics in Callexico and El Centro. So she will be the one that's going to be coordinating a lot of the stakeholder meetings that are coming up. When we went to the board in November, one of the things that they asked us to do is to make sure that we engage the community from Brawley to make sure that they are part of the process of providing input of, we want to listen to the concerns, we want to obtain their feedback. We also want to provide, like we did today, information on the project to promote a very transparent process. We understand there are concerns and we want to learn from that. We will be announcing the dates and times when the stakeholder meetings will be taking place. We will be announcing in social media platforms and the radio, a local newspaper, time in advance to give time for individuals to attend. We will be have an endorsed announcement. We're going to provide an email address where individuals can send us their questions or concerns. And what else? Victoria, can you think about?
If any of you guys have any recommendations to have us do these stakeholder meets? I know someone gave me some contact information for the Stockman's Club. But if you have any other places that where anyone in the community can attend and hear our presentations and ask any additional questions or express their concerns so we can address them?
And next, we just wanted to go over, and I think that you have heard him from Dr. Gonzalez and Ray, some of the benefits that having this project. It doesn't go to the next slide. Like they say, you know, having the services does decrease overdose. It saves lives. It really connects people to treatment and eventually to recovery. It reduces, you know, the loitering, people that are around abusing or using drugs. And also, if we address it early, you know, it doesn't just impact the individual. It impacts the neighbors, the family, everyone around them. You know, some economic and community benefits that it really makes a positive impact for those agencies that are currently affected, like the ED, the emergency department, the law enforcement. Because once the individual, like Ray mentioned, you know, once you start getting treatment and you start on your road to recovery, you will have less impact on other services. You know, there's a lot of misconceptions that having a clinic creates crime or brings more people that are homeless to the communities. We've been hearing this. And one of the things that we can tell you from experience having the clinic in Callexico and El Centro is that individuals that come and receive services are not the ones that are homeless that you see on the streets. We are the ones, you know, trying to improve that. We see those individuals that are homeless camping outside some of our clinics, but those are not our clients. Those are individuals that do need help, but they're not necessarily clients of our clinic. They're not there to get services in, I would say, in all cases. And also, you know, and on the next slide, I provide some of the resources that we mentioned here of research that has been done about all those misconceptions that this has a negative impact on property. Because, you know, the research is there. There is limited research, but the one that it's out there that really targets or talk about these benefits or the experience of having clinics, it was really well done by the John Hopkins University. So next, we just wanted to say, you know, that just talk about the positives of having this in your community because we see it in the other communities where we're at. So we'll open it for comments or questions.
A lot of information to digest. Does anyone from the public would like to comment? And then we'll close it out. But like I said, there's additional opportunities to reach out if you feel like you want to do offline. But if you want to like speak right now, feel free to come.
Good evening. Robert Trim, I'm a citizen here in Brawley. Thank you for that presentation, Dr. Gonzalez and Ray. Thank you for your participation. I agree, the stuff you're seeing out of the emergency room coming from here is what we need in addition to other stuff out there. You need to see emergency patients. My question is, you're talking about a lot of money being thrown at a building downtown Brawley. Why can't you spend about a third or a quarter of that money going buying a lot somewhere in the town and building ground up exactly what you need? So we're not spending more money. You know, that building at two twenty was a tractor shop back in the sixties. It's been a bank two or three times. And now it's a courthouse. I hope the county can figure out a way to repopulate the area that they're losing by transferring the courthouse down to El Centro. But it just seems to me, looking at it as a, in the private sector, there's a lot of money spent. That's something that could be done much cheaper and get exactly what you want somewhere else in the city of Brawley. I think everybody here can empathize with the problems of people with mental health. But I'm thinking, my God, yourself has got to have mental problems if you think we can spend twenty-five million dollars and you can do it for probably five million dollars somewhere else. So, thank you.
Good evening. Sam Katschman, Brawley resident, seventy-one-year Brawley resident. Been here a long time, sat behind this podium with you guys in the past. Want to talk a little bit about this. I'm opposed to this because of the location. I'm very concerned about that location. When you put a clinic like this into a mainly commercial area with thriving business, it does have, I believe it does have a negative impact. If just in the fact that it is that type of clinic. It may not be related to the clients. It may not be related to all of that. It does have a negative impact. And I believe that it does negatively affect some property values, especially those related to commercial businesses that are open to the public. I think you have a lot of opposition to this from residences and businesses around that facility. We have twenty-two people that have signed a petition related to this that live right in close proximity to that and that have a business in that area and the employees of those businesses. And so I think you're going to see a lot more of that happening in the future as we have these open meetings and this discussion regarding this facility. That started out as a tractor supply, as you know, when I was here at that time. Then it went to a bank and that's a commercial use and that's a great thing. When the county decided to take over that building and put the Sheriff's Department, the courthouse in there, I think there were some concerns, but I think everybody came to adapt to that and what that was going to be and what it would entail. Substance abuse. Substance abuse clinics are a different subject and I think people have a lot more concerns with that. And that location, I believe, is wrong. I don't, I don't begrudge the services. I come from a family where my sister, may she rest in peace, was a heroin addict. Okay? And so we've experienced that in my family and we've had other drug problems within the family. However, I just don't believe that's the proper location to put this facility. I'm also concerned that, I don't believe the county can guarantee us that that will never become a methadone clinic or may become something worse than what, than maybe a substance abuse clinic. So that's my concern. I don't think there are any guarantees in life as we can see from the usages of that building. And so that's my ma, a big concern of mine. When I sat on the city council, my major concern was protection of the city, protection of the residences, provide services, but do that in a proper way that protects everybody and everyone's interests. And I think that's important for us to all realize. And I just think this is a bad location for that, as I thought the location over by the hospital was a bad location for that. And I do have some experience with going to Callexico and whether that clinic affects them in Callexico or not, I do believe that there's a lot of problems over there with that area and that location. And I don't know if it's related to the clinic or not, I can't really say that specifically, but I do know it is a problem and I don't want that to happen here in my city, in the city of Brawley, where I've resided all my life and plan to continue to reside as long as I can. So thank you very much for your attention and I, I will be present at some of the additional meetings that you may have on this subject. I do ask that the, the city of Brawley do not give a letter of support for this grant. I do believe that I noticed the, the listing of support there on the, the screen. I did not see very many north end facilities or individuals or anything else providing support for this grant. So thank you very much.
Thanks, Sam.
Any other comments?
Eric Reyes. Tough, tough issue, obviously. The need is great. You saw those numbers. I was amazed by Brawley's skyrocketing numbers, right? If you saw it, really, really amazing, really stood out. Yeah, amazing. Numbers don't lie, right? So we know there's a problem. We all see it. We've lived it, some of us, right? And as Sam said, in our families and so on, friends and so on. It's a difficult one. But now, I was at the county when they first approved, at a meeting where they first approved them allowing to go for the grant. And they said the stipulation was that there would be vigorous community outreach. So we're seeing part of it, that they're going to be proposing a letter, and it's no. I urge the residents, all the youth who are opposed or for it or want to know more, to be at those, to be part of that process as they stated. And I hope the city will send representation and each city councilman should be a one or two until you can hear what the residents as well are saying. You can convey what the residents are hearing and saying at these meetings where they will be doing Q, Q and A, unlike today. Today was a presentation only, much different. And I think you will hear people give their passion, give their ideas and for, against, some wanting to learn more. And that's fine. And it's good, that's a democratic process. But I do hope, as Sam said, that the council itself, you have no jurisdiction, as you know, right? You have zero jurisdiction of it coming in. The county can do as it wants because it's a county building and they have jurisdiction on it. But you do have a straw vote, you do have the right to make an opinion as a city council, whether it carries any weight at all on this jurisdiction, it will carry public opinion weight. And I hope you do do that after the public engagement. I think that's a good duty and responsibility of the city council itself. Thank you.
Public comments?
Good evening.
Lower your mic a little bit.
There, right there? Can you hear me now? I agree with Mr. Trim that that is not the location to put that, that substance abuse clinic or whatever it is you're going to do or whatever it's going to change into once you get it there. I, I, I had occasion, Dr. Quong was my dentist and I saw what happened to his property and I saw what happened to Mr. Trim's property, the CPA. Mr. Trim complained and complained and complained and it didn't make any difference. Mental health was across the parking lot and, and his, his office was a mess. He had people coming in, wandering into his office. I don't know how he did business because he had kept both the south door and the, and the north door locked. If I wanted to go see him, I had to call ahead of time so they would be there to open the door. But, but I think that it's a little bit strange that the county is concerned about people that are using substance abuse, don't have transportation in El Centro, but the county was not concerned about the people from El Centro, I'm sorry, the people from Brawley that pay taxes, pay the bills and need transportation in El Centro to use the court because they took, they moved the court to El Centro and now they're moving the hospital. No one is saying anything about the people from the north end of the county are going to have to, are going to have to travel to El Centro to get basic medical services. But, and I'm, and I'm going to complain also about our city council people. As long as I'm up here, I'm not listening to hell.
Sorry to interrupt.
Our city has been deteriorating and, and, and I think it's time that, that we, that we regroup, get our, get our, our, our people working to bring in businesses so that we don't have to rely on substance abuse clinics to, to help us. We, we need businesses to come in and pay taxes to help pay for the expenses. I think that if, if you put your thinking caps on, I think that you'll be able to get the support of the community. And we have a lot of people that are very, very intelligent, very resourceful that can do that. And I'd be willing to help. I don't have much time, but I'd be willing to help. But, but I don't think, I think that, that substance abuse clinic is going to be in the wrong place. We have a bank across the street and the ready teller is used constantly at all times of the day and night. And I think we're going to have problems in that area. And now for me, just, just with the problem that we're having with the homeless, I have to keep my door locked. I, I've had to pay to put in more cameras and more lights because of the people that are loitering. Just as an example, I have a gentleman that comes in and bathes in front of my office about every other day because he uses a water hose. And I, I haven't run him off because if he wants to take a bath in front of my office, it's okay. But, but I think that those, those kinds of things are going to increase with this type of substance abuse facility. And, and the problem is by the time we figure out that it's not a good deal, you've already spent all that money. And I agree also with Mr. Trim that my goodness, they should, they could make better use of that money someplace else and they can build what they want. They don't have to, they don't have to deal with trying to, trying to amend or change a building. You're going to have the expense of having to tear, tear parts of it down and make it fit where you can just build something and, and, and save the money from the renovation because you're going to have to tear down and build. Where you could just build where if you put it someplace else. Thank you all very much.
Public comments? All right. Open the council. Do you have any questions? I know Beaurel, if you'd like to come back up to the podium, we may have her to address or even actually a question, I know we may have. Have any questions for Beaurel, anyone?
I just wanted to clarify because I know this, this continues to be a concern. And in one of the first slides, when we talked about the requirements is, first of all, behavioral health, we cannot operate a methadone clinic. And then the commitment is that for 30 years, we're only going to provide the services that are indicated in the grant. We cannot change the purpose of the clinic. It's only intended for, for the services that, that were explained when we talked about the project. In regards to the amount, I just want to say that when we started submitting grants and, and we think that the money, it's a huge amount, we all agree. However, when you're doing government projects, the cost just skyrockets. The, the grant that we obtained for the, the residential facility in El Centro, we said it's not going to be